Staff, are you ready? I'd like to call the order. The May 6, 2024, Richland County Planning Commission Meeting. Staff, please confirm the following. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, a copy of the agenda was sent to the news media, persons requesting notification, and posted on the bulletin board located in the county administration building. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Staff, can you please take attendance for today's meeting?
All right, now, for the Monday, May 6, Planning Commission, 2024 Planning Commission. Attendants? Yonkey?
Here.
Fryerson? Johnson?
Here.
Duffy? Metz? Durant?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Sirkz? Grady?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum.
Sir. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the May 6, 2024, Richland County Planning Commission Meeting. As planning commissioners, we are concerned residents of Richland County who volunteer our time to thoroughly review and make recommendations to county council. Our recommendations are to approve or deny zoning map amendment requests. Per Title VI, Chapter 29 of the SE Code of Laws, planning commission may also prepare and revise plans and programs for the development or redevelopment of unincorporated portions of the county. The county's land development code rewrite process conducted last year is an example. So is the comprehensive plan. Once again, we are recommending body to county council, and they will conduct their own public hearing and take official votes to approve or deny map amendments and text amendments on a future date to be published by the county. Council typically holds zoning public hearings on the fourth Tuesday of the month. Please check the county website for updated agendas, dates, and times. Please take note of the following guidelines for today's meeting. Please turn off or silence any cell phones. Audience members may quietly come and go as needed. The applicant is allowed up to two minutes to make statements. Citizens sign up to speak are also allowed two minutes to speak. Redundant comments should be minimized. Please only address remarks to the commission and do not expect the commission to respond to questions from the speaker in a back-and-forth style. That's not the purpose of this meeting. Please no audience-speaker exchanges. No audience demonstrations or other disruptions to the meeting are permitted, nor our comments from anyone other than the speaker at the podium. Please remember, the meeting is being recorded. Please speak into the microphone and give your name and address. Abusive language is inappropriate and will not be tolerated. Please don't voice displeasure or frustration at a recommendation while the planning commission is still conducting business. If you have any questions or concerns, you may contact the Richland County Planning Department staff down below here. We're going to move on to number three now on our agenda, which is additions or deletions to the agenda. Are there any motions for that today? Commissioners? Anything changing on the agenda today, staff?
No, sir.
Thank you. We can move on to number four, which is the approval of minutes from prior meetings. The staff provided commission with copies of the transcript of the commission's April 1, 2024, meeting. Do any commissioning members have any comments or concerns regarding these transcripts? Okay, hearing none. The chair makes a motion to approve the minutes unless there's an objection. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you Commissioner Durant. Staff, please take a vote.
Those in favor of the approval of the April 1, 2024 Planning Commission minutes? Yonkey?
Aye.
Johnson? Durant?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
And motion passes.
Thank you, staff. This moves us on to number five on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Looking at names signed up today, we're not going to really have any map amendments on the consent agenda, but we still have item 5A, which is road names. So as long as the commission agrees, the chair makes a motion for the consent agenda to just move forward with A, road names. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Grady. Can I, staff, please take a vote?
Those in favor of the approval of the road names? Yonkey?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Durant?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, staff. Okay, this will move us on to 5B1, which is case number 24-005MA. Going to hand it over to staff for explanation.
All right, the first item, of course, is stated as case 24-005MA. The applicant is Kathy Peak. The applicant is requesting to rezone a little more than one acre from general commercial to light industrial. A property is located, there are three properties that are subject to this request. They are located along the 10,000 block of Two-Notch Road. Staff recommends disapproval of this request, and staff is of the opinion the request does not comply with the intentions of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan recommends supporting industrial development along economic development corridors and within the identified industrial parks. The proposed zoning does not promote the recommended land uses identified in the plan. In addition, the requested zoning district is not in character with the existing development pattern and uses in the immediate area. Again, for those reasons, staff recommends disapproval of this request.
Hey, thank you, staff. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff at this moment? All right, Commissioner Johnson, do we have anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have three, two people in addition to the applicant.
Go ahead and call the applicant.
Applicant Carolyn Peaking.
Come on down to the podium.
Good afternoon.
State your name and address.
Carol Peak, 101 Shoal Creek Lane, Blythewood, South Carolina.
Thanks.
Okay, to begin with, I would like to make some changes, adjustments, whatever, to the agenda. The, I have a copy of what was sent to the zoning commission as to what the acreage is on it, attached to this, if anybody is interested in seeing it. But the acreage in total is 3.98 acres, and I know that the light industrial, I think, is a two-acre minimum requirement. But that's just an adjustment I would, I would have. We have a one-acre lot, a 1.97 acre, and a 2.97 acre total on that one. But 3.98 in all, all three. Okay, I reviewed the tables for general commercial, and while I respect the comments made about not having any light industrial in that area, the, reviewing the tables for general commercial properties, there are many limitations to not being able to utilize this building as they were originally built by my father in the 90s. Kathy and I both inherited the properties. One building is, has a 12-by-14 bay on the side of it for large trucks, boats, et cetera, to enter. The front of that building has two 12-by-12 roll doors, steel roll doors, and then the other building has a 12-by-12 roll door on the side. So, and these buildings are adjacent to one another, and then one piece of land is unapproved. The, of the 202 general commercial property allowances, which you can use it for, there are limitations went through, and there's only 34 conducive uses that these buildings that were designed like a warehouse and, you know, great, a very large area in the back for storage, fenced-in area. So of the 202, there's only 34 that are really conducive. The reason that they would not be, again, they're built like, you know, warehouse buildings, shops. There's no central heat and air, just individual heat and air units in the office area.
And give me your final thoughts since you've ran past your time, I'm sorry.
Already, really?
Yep.
I talked so.
Time flies, sorry.
Final request is I would respectfully appreciate the brief consideration for light industrial. There are renters looking to rent one of the empty buildings right now, and under the general commercial rules, they would not apply. And, you know, the buildings need to be rented out in order to pay for property taxes and keep the buildings viable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next name?
Okay. Also has a question. Next speaker signed up is Alfonso Broughton. Harold Johnson? That concludes.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. This is down the floor for discussion. Any further questions? Commissioner Johnson, question?
Question for staff, and, or maybe I should direct it to the applicant, but staff first. If I understood the applicant's comments regarding prior use, was there a break-in use? Is there not a case that this was grandfathered in by prior use based on the applicant's comments? Or did I misunderstand?
So originally, there was a rezoning that took place in the past at general commercial. My understanding was it was some non-conforming structures on there. That request has, was granted. Towing was, a business license for a towing with no outside storage was approved. And for the one site where you currently see the Bulldog Towing on the Google Maps, and then the adjacent property, the new tenant, the proposed use would not be permitted in GC, which therefore requires a rezoning to be in conformance with the ordinance. So it's not really a grandfathering or non-conforming issue. Did I answer your question?
I heard your answer, I'm just trying to process and make sure I'm tracking it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Johnson, further questions? Comments, discussion, commissioners? Of staff, the neighboring properties? They, do they fit LI in the uses?
Which parcels are you specifically referring to?
Surrounding properties here in Two-Notch.
Looks, you know, just kind of looking at it, you may have the retail, commercial uses. Of course, they would fit under the GC. And I believe if you're looking at the LI, I believe LI would also allow for retail sales. And I can check it's in your packet also. There are a couple of other uses. Yes, sir, so, so the, the, the commercial uses that you see, the, in that area would allow for those uses? There's a, I think, a manufactured home part further up, but that's not zoned out of commercial or the requested LI. So there, all of the parcels that you see that are developed on those uses would be allowed under the GC and also, it's like under the LI also.
Thank you, staff, and thank you for the addition to our packet. I feel like this is the first time we've got these additional pages, current uses and proposed, and it's helpful. Commissioners, discussions or even a motion?
Air?
Yes, Commissioner Grady.
I would like to offer a motion recommending disapproval of this map amendment based on the staff opinion that it does not comply with the comprehensive plan.
Second. Thank you, Commissioner Grady. I hear a second from Commissioner Taylor. With that motion on the floor, staff, please take a vote.
All right, we have a motion for disapproval of case 24-005MA. Voting, a yes vote would be in favor of that disapproval. Those in favor? Grady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Durant?
Aye.
Johnson? Yonkey?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, staff. Again, county, we deserve a recommendation of disapproval for county council. They will have their meeting fourth Tuesday of the month?
Actually, actually, it would be the 21st of this month. At 7:00 PM.
21st, 7:00 PM.
21st, yes.
Thank you. All right, we will continue to move along on the agenda for item 5B2, case number 24-007. I hand this back over to staff for explanation.
All right, again, the next item is case 24-007MA. The applicant is, I'm saying is Gunell G. Kim. The location is 105 Weir Road. The applicant is making a request to reserve, to, excuse me, to rezone a quarter of an acre from R3, which is residential 3, to GC, general commercial. Staff recommends approval of this request. It's deemed to be consistent with the objectives of the comprehensive plan for this designation. One thing that staff did point out that this area does transition from commercial as you leave Two-Notch Road going back along Weir Road into residential. Just want to kind of bring that to your opinion, but based on the, the commercial designations east of the subject site, it may not be deemed to be a true encroachment into the residential care of the Weir Road area.
Thank you, staff. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. I'll go back to Commissioner Johnson here, call some names.
The applicant present?
Gunell Kim?
Mr. Chair, before Mr. Kim speaks, just as a reminder of, if you could let everyone know, both podiums are in operation, so they can choose whichever one they want to go to.
Thank you. Hi, sir. Please state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes.
Gunell G. Kim, 188 Statue Loop, Elgin, South Carolina, 29045.
Do you want to speak anything about your property?
No, I'm just here to apply for rezoning of the residential property 105 Weir Drive to general purpose, parking lot purpose for the adjacent business right next to it, which is 8605 Two-Notch Road.
Sir, anything else you want to tell us about the property?
That property had a house a long time ago, and it was demolished for the purpose of additional use of parking lot for the business just adjacent to it. And it's been a while, and, and I just recently found out that I had to have rezoning done, so that's what I'm here for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good. Okay. You don't have anything else? You can take your seat?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next name?
We have one, excuse me, we want one speaker signed up against Ted McDaniel.
My name's Ted Daniel, I own the property next to 105 Weir Road. I'm at 108 Weir.
I'll check the microphone for you.
Test, test.
Thank you.
So my name's Ted McDaniel, I own the property at 108 Weir Drive, which is across the street from the property that Mr. Kim owns. Basically, that property has been illegal for many, many years. It never has been rezoned from R3 to GC. It was just made into a parking lot. When I purchased that property back in 1993, there was a house on there, and the house was not destroyed. The house was removed from the property after the latest tenant was on there. And then all of a sudden, it just became the parking lot for the nightclub. Now, everybody in Columbia knows this nightclub, because there's been more shootings there. There's been more stuff going on at this place than you can shake a stick at. And me and the other neighbors that live in this neighborhood, not necessarily live in the neighborhood, but are part of this neighborhood, are sick and tired of this nightclub. And, you know, we're, we have had to pick up trash there every single day. Every time that club is open, there's more red solo cups than you can shake a stick at. My question is, I'm a contractor, and when I built my place across the street, I had to come before y'all, and I had to have it rezoned commercial, C3, and I had to put in retention ponds, and I had to pave, and I had to put curbs in. I had to put landscaping in. I had to do all this stuff. But this has never once been done. All the, all the dirt has washed out into the road. I'm constantly having to take equipment and clean the dirt out of the road because it's not properly done. Okay?
Final thoughts? Can you give me your final thoughts since your time's up?
My final thoughts is, is I'm totally against this. I'm tired of picking up women's underwear in my parking lot. I'm tired of them using my place of business as a restroom, urinating all over my building and all that stuff, and I want this place shut down.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming out tonight. Are there any other names, Commissioner Johnson?
No, that's all. Any other one else that wants to address this?
Anyone maybe came in late? Okay. Commission, this is down on the floor for discussion, further questions? I feel like at the beginning of the meeting, I mentioned that we are a planning commission. We look at zoning requests, so we have to keep it to the zone purpose of the land itself. Like what's around it, does it fit in character with the neighborhood? Questions, discussions, anyone have a motion?
Air?
Yes, Commissioner Grady.
Just a brief comment, then I will offer a motion. I understand the, the thoughts of the man who came out, and as you said, I think this, that there, there may be matters here for code enforcement or potentially law enforcement depending on the situation. But as you say, we do need to follow the, the structure of the comprehensive plan. I believe this request is, is squarely within that. So given that, I will make a motion to advance 24-007MA to county council with a recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Grady. Do I have a second?
Second.
I got, I hear a second from Commissioner Taylor. All right, so with the motion and a second on the floor, staff, can you please take a vote?
All right, we have a motion for approval of case 24-007MA. My yes vote is in support of that motion for approval. Are those in favor? Grady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Durant?
Aye.
Johnson? Yonkey?
Aye.
All right, that, motion for approval of case 24-007MA passes.
Thank you, staff. Comment, do you have?
I was just going to make a comment.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you.
Yes.
The chair always emphasizes that we are a recommending body and that it's got to go to council, and there are some, like colleague explained, based on the facts and what we have in front of us, we're led to go.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. And keep the meeting moving along. We're still in item 5B, case 3, which is case number 24-008MA. Staff, I hand it back over to you.
All right, also, Mr. Chair, thank you, as you normally do. This matter will be heard by county council on the 21st of May, in council chambers at 7:00 PM.
Yes, thank you.
All right, the next item is case 24-008MA. The applicants are Heather Bounds and Christina Tran. The applicants are requesting to amend the current PDD. So it's a PDD to PDD comprised of 63.95 acres. The location is along Crane Church Road, Fearfield Road, and also in another section of Crane Church Road. It stated, this is, there's, this is an approved PDD previously. As stating in the zoning history portion of your packet, it was originally zoned to plan development in 94, and there was a subsequent amendment to that in 2007. So if you kind of take a look on So if you kind of take a look on page 22 of your packet, we tried to best to kind of give a comparison of what the previous zoning designation, the previous PDD would allow on the current PDD, and what the proposal would do. In a nutshell, there will be an increase in the single family units, but in totality, there will be a reduction in the total number of units allowed. I believe the current PDD allows for 1,700 total residential development, and I believe the proposed amendment to the PDD will take this down to about 1,500. In addition to the residential lots, there's also a proposal, we have it as a recreation area, which would be recreational lagoon with 200 apartments, a 150 room hotel, 10,000 square feet of retail, and 5,000 square feet for a restaurant. Also, within your package, you will note that there is a there, sorry, there should be an ordinance. There are two ordinances that are in there on page 31 would be the, if adopted, this should be the actual ordinance that would be for the amendment up to the PDD. And you need to rear, you will find the old ordinance for, from 2007, which is found on page 57. So the two ordinances on 31 for the proposed PDD and 57 for the current PDD. Yeah, and one other thing, too, also, as part of the PDD, the applicant has identified a number of additional uses, including many of the uses found in the 2024 general commercial zoning designation of the Riston County Land Development Code, and that is found on page 24 of your packet of the proposed uses. And so, you know, we don't, we don't really get a lot of PDDs anymore. So this is one of the things you can look at, and as part of your recommendations, you can make, unlike your typical rezoning request, you know, whatever that zoning designation is, all uses that go with it are allowed. With this one, there are things you can look at and make recommendations that as for what you'll be forwarding to County Council of any, you know, recommended changes that you see from what is proposed. And that would include uses or anything else. And that would be it for staff.
Thank you, staff. We have several names signed up to speak, so let's get to this. Yes.
Let's begin with the applicant, Heather Bounds, Christina Tran.
Charles Howell signed up as the speaker.
Okay.
Sorry.
I see that. Thank you. Name and address and two minutes.
Sorry, go ahead. Charles Howell with the Land Planning Group South, I'm at 11 Rosemount Court in Blythewood, South Carolina. I'm a consultant for the owner. Again, like Geo said, it's basically a PDD that we performed or prepared in 2007, obviously with the recession and everything that fell through new owners, and they want to make a change for basically a pretty exciting change for that lower left portion. That's why the unit numbers changed. That was all slated for all apartments, and now it's going to be, like Geo said, lagoon, mixed use retail, some apartments. That's the net change of total units by about 12%. Obviously, we're excited about it. It's finally happening. Again, it's minor tweaks. I think Geo brought up some of the changes there, and we have met with Ms. Barron. She got us together with the Stakeholder Committee of local community leaders. We had that meeting. And then we also had an open house community meeting and a HOA meeting, and that seemed positive. So with that, the owner's here also, if you have questions for them, too.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Sure.
All right. Would the owner like to come down and speak? Nope, you're good? Okay.
Emily Drake.
Okay, thank you. Lynn Pierce, you're good? Okay.
Becky Harris.
Is that Patrick Harris? All right.
We have two names signed up as against Dulce Perez.
Come on down.
My name is Dulce Perez. I live on Dubard Boyle Road.
What's your address, please?
Dubard Boyle Road. My name is Dulce Perez. I do understand that this is something positive, but at the same time, I kind of want to know, like, what's going to happen with, like, I do know that they want to do a lot of buildings, but we have really bad roads. The more buildings they have, the more traffic, and like I say, our roads are really, really deteriorated. As well, that being said, like, are they going to have, are they going to expand, like, the roads? What's going to have for, like, all the other community, like, for our area as well? Because like I said, the more people we leave there, the more horrible traffic it's going to get there as well. So that's all I have to say. Like, I kind of want them to think about, you know, the residential people that are still there. Thank you.
Thank you. Went out tonight.
We also have signed up Dubard Boyle.
Oh, got it. Thank you. You see it? All right, cool. All right. Thanks for coming out to speak. Okay, Commission, this is on the floor for discussion and questions. Back to staff. Again, with the PDD, we have more work to do up here if we want to give any revisions or recommendation.
Yes, sir. I mean, you have, you know, a number of options. You could approve it as proposed, and that's what would be forwarded to council. You can also recommend approvals subject to recommended changes on behalf of the planning commission also. Did staff have any editorial comments to the proposed plan? No, sir. I think we looked at this. Staff did have an opportunity to speak with the developer, the applicant, and their design professional, Mr. Howell, and look at some of the uses that you found on page 24 of that, of your packet that will be allowed within the PDD. I mean, I think if there was anything you may, you may want to look at some of the uses, but overall, there wasn't much that staff recommended, any additional changes.
It's for Commissioner Johnson, it's for Commissioner Durant? Go ahead.
This is a simple question for staff. This is an existing plan development district, and the proposed change is for a plan development district. Why does the only have to come to the county to seek to make any changes since it's already a planned development district?
Right. So one of the things about a planned development district is you're able to essentially craft your own zoning designation. You know, as I think I may have stated before, our land development code that we have currently have, and I think we've passed this on all over the years, so this is the, this is the land development code. It may, it could actually almost be twice as big if, if we were to include all of the PDDs that we have, because actually a PDD, each PDD could be PDD Oak Hill, PDD Gorkrey Farms, PDD Lake Carolina, kind of see where I'm going, because you get to craft your own. But one of the caveats of approving a PDD is that any major changes, and the major changes typically identify the uses within the PDD, when those are going to change, then that requires, that's considered to be a major amendment, and it requires to go back through the process of going to the planning commission and going back to the county council and having a public hearing for those changes.
Thank you, Commissioner Durant. Back to Commissioner Johnson.
Mr. Price.
Is it my general understanding that however many years ago, state law changed such that a PUD requires a commercial element at this point, correct?
Yes, sir. It requires a true mixed use, a true mixed use, so it couldn't be a single use plan development. So, and so looking at this, this one still maintains that a mixed use component within the whole PDD from residential, commercial uses that have been identified.
So the combination of uses, would that be sufficient if it was only single family and multifamily, or would that still be considered a single use?
That would be a single use.
Okay. So, and in the event that a proposed use is not feasible, then what happens to that designated use?
You mean as they decide to develop it and?
Correct. I mean, and again, this is, I mean, looking at the location for what's shown for retail and hotel, if I'm reading the map appropriately, if that use falls out as not being actually able to be developed, what happens? They're going to have to come back and redo the PUD? And is that just a way of getting around a fully residential development by sticking in a corner of commercial?
Staff, with this being a PDD, could the applicant come back and address any questions or?
I'm sure it's need be. So to answer the question by Commissioner Johnson, yes, so over, over the years, we've had a number of PDDs that have come in that I've seen, and you're right, there are some occasions, some have actually just stuck, you know, maybe a commercial component to the PDD that never gets developed, and so it just really turns out to be one use development. Now, that area, the area of the PDD that they've designated for specific use, so let's just say a commercial section, that is all that can be used for. So it's either going to, it would either remain vacant, or it would be developed commercially, or they would have to come back in for some type of amendment. But again, they were still, even with an amendment, they would still need to maintain each, a mixed use component for the development.
No one, no, I mean, at that point, our hands are tied, because the rest of the PDD would be?
It could be. I will, I will say that over the years, on those, you know, there have been some things that staff has looked at also. So one of the things that could happen is, there could be a, you could establish points in which a certain percentage of residential would have to be built, or a commercial would have to be built, you know, prior to taking the next step. That's always a tough one, but that way, you just don't have a true residential development in this case, and then later on, you don't have the commercial. So in some cases, you could say, you know, once above 25% build out of residential, a certain percentage of commercial must be established, along those lines. But, you know, one of the tough parts about that, that will, I will, I'm going to point this out, that usually PDDs are typically large tracts of land, and it's usually something that's going, it takes a while to completely build out. Again, if you look at some of the ones that we currently have in the county. So a lot of times, market conditions could change, but I think as we stated, if that were the case, that the option of coming in to amend the PDD is always there.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. So today, staff, we're actually looking at the ordinance for this PDD. This is what we approve, when we recommend approval. Is that correct?
Well, to a degree, yes, because ultimately, that's what would be the binding document on this, on if this PDD gets approved, the ordinance along with any references such as to the general development plan or any other exhibits.
That's page 31 of our packet again. That's what we would recommend approval for or disapproval. And this is where, as a planning commissioner, we can also put in a recommendation, like to piggyback off of Commissioner Johnson, if we wanted to say at 10% completed this, you would have to do 10% commercial if that was viable.
It could be, but, you know, again, you know, you also have to take into consideration market conditions, and kind of, you know, not arbitrarily just pick a percentage of build out, if there's a be a reason behind it.
Does the applicant have any thoughts on this? I'm going to bring the applicant down for a second. This is a large track of land that we sign off on as, you know, collective piece. Good, good comments were made here, so I feel like, I'll give you the floor for another minute to have a good discussion. It's worth it.
And I'm not sure if the whole thing is, this is not the only commercial piece. There's a commercial piece on 321 at the entrance. There's also a commercial piece near Boyle to Dubard Road. So this is not a PDD that will be, just have one little piece of commercial and not be done. They're currently working on the lagoon, so we're hoping that gets built like this fall with phase one, which is off of Crane Creek Church Road. So I'm not really sure about, not really worried about the commercial piece not coming, but as Geo said, you can't real, and what I'm worried about is what I heard is that I'm, I hear tying commercial into a number of lots. You got to have the lots to bring the commercial, and no one will come if there's no lots there. So usually in a development, we find that as you build the lots, people will come. And so, but I think just the, just the three different commercial areas is example enough is that we want to have the commercial as part of the development, obviously.
Yes, I'm hoping to see this on the map. I see them scrolling.
I can go down one more.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I do know it printed in the packet, so I'm not sure what's going on with.
Well, there's the retail hotel, the south part of the property, and the east. Tommy's going up and down, but I see it. I think I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so the original golf course entrance is off 321, and so all that's prime commercial, obviously. And so we show a lot of commercial there as, as part of that. So I, there's no doubt there'll be commercial as part of this development, if that's a concern.
I aim for honest development, so when the people come out there, they're getting what they're expecting, especially if we're going to approve or as a recommendation. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, Tommy, go back to 54. Yes, now showing, 54. Yeah, so just, we'll just use this, even though it's mostly for the open space, but you can see the commercial sections of this, which would be along Fearfield Road. There's also the area that we identified as the recreation area with the lagoon, the apartments and the retail there, and also across the street along Crane Church Road, there's another commercial section. And also north of the property, there's another section. So there are at least four sections of, for commercial use within this PDD. And the applicant stated, one of the things, they have begun to submit all plans for the commercial developed section for the recreation area this time. So I'm not sure if that addresses any of your concerns, but just to let you know that
I'm thinking of those future, future families will come down to come live near this lagoon, and we say it's coming in the plan. And we say it's coming in the plan. Johnson?
Just making sure I'm understanding the text of the ordinance. Under B1D, 225 lots, 20 by 100? Am I reading that correctly?
Which page are you looking at, sir?
Page 31.
Okay. Is it B? Yes, sir. The, yeah, the 225 lots, those are for townhomes. The 225 lots that are 20 by 100, those are going to be for townhomes.
Those are townhomes.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to see their location on the plan again? I'm like, sorry, Tommy. Can you open another tab or duplicate?
While he's pulling that up, let me just say this.
Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
Our commissioner, who's no longer with us during the map amendment process, raised considerable issues and concerns with respect to density, which I supported and agree with. We cannot, well, let me not make it a statement. Under the current zoning allowances, what zoning would be allowed to achieve that kind of density? That would have to be a what? I mean, 6?
It's interesting because, that it would vary on the acreage in which is going to be developed. So that could range anywhere from the R3, which would be six units per acre, up to R5, excuse me, R5 and R6. Now, one of the differences in our code is R5 and R6, which are higher-density zoning designations, which are 12 and 18 respectively. And the R5 and R6, they do not allow for single-family. They only allow for either two, three, or multifamily developments. So it's kind of, it's a little different than our previous code, Land Development Code, in which even the higher zoning designations allow for both single-family detached along with multifamily. But under our current code, it only allows for...
Just to paraphrase Mr. Price, make sure, say it in my words, to achieve that level of density under other aspects of our code without the PDD, they would be in a multifamily zoning.
In some areas.
In some of these areas.
In some areas, and the others will be potentially higher. Yeah, so looking at this, I'm trying to tell you. So the lots that are designated is, if you turn to page 22 in your package, I think it's a little easier to follow there, at least for me. So, under the proposed, where it says 824 single-family detached units, 363 lots at 75 by 135, which is about 10,000 square feet, that would need to fall, that will fall under the R2, I believe the R2 zoning designation. For the 401 lots, which come out to about 7,200 square feet, that would need to be R3. And as you start to get into the 225 lots, that would require a much higher designation for the 2,000, that would probably need to fall in more to multifamily. So in order to achieve this, you would have to have a number of zoning designations within, which would also include commercial also.
Just to, I'm not trying to beat this horse, but just, we've spent considerable time establishing a new map amendment to decrease the level of density. My opinion, this seems to be increasing the level of density.
Oh, I don't, I'm not sure if I would say that y'all did. The, the, the result was to decrease density because there are a number of our zoning designations that the planning commission did recommend to council, which was subsequently adopted. They do allow for what you consider pretty relatively high density for developments. So I wouldn't say that y'all have decreased it. We still need the rezoning request to occur.
True, I mean, I'm not saying that we eliminated this, that's not, I may not have articulated myself very well, but we can talk about this outside the bounds of this case. But what I guess what I'm trying to say is that in order to achieve, for example, like the townhouses, you can't do that in R1 and R2.
Correct.
And so there were some of the lower zoning parameters that allowed for a higher density that now have, we increase the requirements that then mean you have to rezone for a higher density. That's what, that's really what I mean when I say, I don't mean across the board. So I spoke with, I did not speak in a precise way, but for our lower-level zoning.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Taylor, Grady, how are you guys? Any thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Grady.
Just one point of clarification and make sure that we have, have the math right here. So on page 21, the sort of summary of the project indicates 64 acres. And then on page 22, there's a number, a total 713.8 acres. Could we just get a clarification from staff on which of those numbers or another number is accurate?
Yes, thank you for bringing that attention. I think as I was even reading that in the beginning, it kind of caught me a bit. I believe that the, what do we have, Tommy? The total is 718.13. That is the correct amount.
Thank you.
No acreage, excuse me.
Chair?
Ask Commissioner Durant.
It's a clarification question. Earlier, Commissioner Johnson asked a question about on the proposed ordinance in Section 2B, 1D, 25, 225 lots, 20 by 100, 2,000 square feet. And her answer was that those are for townhomes, but they're listed under the 824 single-family units. And then number two is, says 290 townhomes. So is that, are those 225 lots for townhomes or single-family units?
Those are for, for the townhomes. Okay, so looks like what we would do is we would remove B2.
Delete the reference to B2?
Yes. And so it will be with 225 for the townhomes.
Just to clarify, staff, would be 1D is correct, 225 lots, 20 by 100. But B2, we're just going to strike that and take away those 290 townhomes.
That is correct. That we would, that wouldn't be an amendment necessary by the planning commission. That would just, that was a, a correction needs to be made by staff.
Good catch, Commissioner. Any other comments, questions, commission?
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Grady.
I just want to make sure we're not like ripping up the developers' plans without knowing it. Is that, I'm not, I'm seeing a shake of the head. Just trying to clarify that striking that 290 townhome item, is that in? Okay. All right, just wanted to make sure we weren't making some massive change without knowing it. Thank you.
My comment, based off Commissioner Johnson earlier, yes, we had a major zoning change since the 2005 code and the 2021. But this was a PDD that was approved back in 2007, so looked at differently. It's a bunch of zoning, different zoning types, as staff explained to us, all into one piece. But we are looking at what would be less units total, is what I've summarized, from it was 1,700 to down to about 1,500, when you do the math?
That's correct.
Okay. Chair? Yes, Commissioner Taylor.
Question for, on page 22, posed in light of the recent section, 290 on that page also need to be stricken through.
That, that, that's also been identified, that would be corrected also.
Again, good eye, Commissioner Taylor.
It's still a net increase from 204 to 225.
So the current is 204 town units, and then we're striking out 290. And okay, but it's going to go up to 225. I see that now. So in general, are we doing less? No, there's some more single-family and some more multifamily. So does that math total out two more units? Would the developer like to come back up for one more minute? We want to clarify this. And for everyone here listening online, instead of looking at one parcel right now, we're looking at several thousands of parcels, so that's why we're giving it good diligence.
Yeah, good evening. So it is, it may be more townhomes, but overall, in the whole community, we are reducing the number of units if you include multifamily and single-family and townhomes count in that single family.
Does that make sense, commission?
Yes.
Yes? Commissioner Taylor?
Okay.
I was trying to find it before I said it. Yeah, also under, on page 31, the total number dwelling units are subject to change up to 20%?
That's for grading purposes typically. We usually lose lots when we grade. I can't guarantee we'll lose lots, but it happens when it comes to construction. Most construction projects, you see a 10 to 20% built-in.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, but did you, I did not read that sentence. You said up to, not for a decrease.
Right, under page 31, Section 2B, there's an asterisk. And I wanted to...
Are we on the same page? Commissioners, are we on the same page with the information?
Certainly.
So that's, that leaves, I mean, I understand from a grading standpoint, but in, but now, but you're leaving yourself 20% to basically add another 50 units of townhouses. 275 units of townhouses, the way that's written.
It's a plus minus, and that's still less than the PDD that's currently approved, sir. Total units. Correct, it's total units overall, apologies. Yeah, so just to clarify, that plus minus is for total units overall, and it's still a reduction down in density for total units overall.
Any further questions, commissioners? Or clarification needed? How are you, Commissioner Durant?
I'm good, thank you.
Great, thanks.
I don't have a question, but it gives me heartburn because there's tremendous increase in density once you factor in the commercial elements in terms of the net add. And then I will say, what buttches is up against, I think, one of my other concerns, which is part of our responsibility, but it also gets more to the policy element though, is the neighborhoods that we're generating and creating based on the stated sizes and square foot, that we're not making larger lots. And so the impact on the economics of that neighborhood of a smaller footprint of lots. So, Mr. Price, maybe if you can give me a correlation of, for those in the 363, 363 lots...
Yes, thank you for coming down.
And the 401 lots in R2 and R3, how does that lot size compare to what would be eligible under R2 and R3 in terms of lot sizes? So let me not make it as a statement, let me make it as a question.
Could you rephrase that question, sir?
Current and proposed use on 22?
Okay.
Well, it's not exact. We're just saying we have a rough correlation between R2 and R3 for the 363 lots at 75 by 135 and the 400 lots at 60 by 20, 120. How does that correspond with our average lot size requirements in those jurisdictions? If I was going to outright approve those R2 and R3, what would my lot sizes correspond to?
Okay, I'm going to turn to this page because this comes off a good bit. Okay, so... I'm looking here, and it kind of goes to a conversation that I think we had, excuse me, with Chairman Yonkey earlier, as a staff. And one of the things that we did when we adopted our current Land Development Code, believed that you could make an argument that there were some gaps within zoning designations. So as I'm looking here in our code, would it be R2, under a major land development, you would have a minimum lot size of 11,000 and a maximum lot size of 18,000. That would be if a property was on R2 and you were trying to develop it with an average size, average lot of 14,500. Under the R3, your minimum lot size is 5,500, with a maximum of 9,000, average size of 7,260. Now, you kind of take note that I did leave out a certain square footage of a lot, which is 10,000. So there's a good chance that if you're looking at our code and somebody wanted to do a 10,000 square foot lot in Ristling County, as I'm looking at this right now, that they couldn't. That would be prohibited.
So 2B1A would not be prohibited under an R2?
Yes, so if you, under, under the R2, the 363 lots, the 10,125, if this was just coming in under your standard zoning designation, and they were trying to R2, that would not allow 10,000 square foot lots. And if they wanted to go to R3, that would not allow 10,000 square foot lots either. So again, you know, with this discussion, it does show that there is, there is a bit of a hole when it comes to our code.
And if B1B, 401 lots of 60 by 120 is even smaller?
Right, now that, of course, would, that would fit neatly under our R3 zoning designation. That would fit, that would fit neatly under R3 as would, as potentially would the 89 lots, the 42 by 135 would also fall within there. So I think the biggest one is the, the first one, the 363 lots, which would come out to about a 10,125 square foot parcel. So under, none of our zoning designations would allow for a lot of that size. But then I guess that's one of the points of a PDD, you are kind of creating your own zoning designation.
Chairman, one final question, I will be quiet.
Good discussion, go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
So using the 363 lots as an example, we're at 10,125 square feet. Are the corresponding setbacks that would go along with R2 coming along with this PDD? What, how are we... What, how, how are we impacting in terms of setbacks in implementing this?
That, I think that has been identified also.
I have a piggyback question, staff, just it seems like with this being a PDD, does the code address that? You know, if we're looking at like Lake Carolina PDD, right? They, the developer sets the setbacks based off of the parameters of PDD, not the individual R2, R3s.
What I'm saying, but.
That's correct.
I don't see any, I don't see any references.
I don't see any references to the setbacks in the PDD is my point, though.
No, you, you're, you're correct.
And I'm not saying that the, the setback should be the R2 setbacks, I'm just saying the setback should be spelled out.
Johnson, would you like to see a recommendation from Plan Commission to write in setbacks to this ordinance?
With staff's guidance. And I'm not trying to be obtuse, Commissioners, I'm just, we're, we're, we've got a fair amount of density here and I, I am concerned about.
Come on down again, our developer. We are speaking on 1,500 parcels in our county. This is worth the time.
So again, it's Charles Howell. They're in there, they're in the PDD. I can't remember what they are, but they are set for the whole development. There are separate setbacks for the townhomes because they're zero lot line.
Yeah, speak into it.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now? They, they're, the setbacks are in the PDD. I can't remember specifically what they are, but there are two sets of setbacks. There's one set for the, the townhomes and one set for the residential lots.
Yes, sir, and I'll, I'll apologize because Mr. Howell and I had to have this discussion. So if you would turn to page 41 of your, of your packet. And if you note near the bottom was as the following guidelines for residential units will apply in commercial areas and alleys using, in areas using alleys as access, the front setback would be one foot from the front property line and the rear and side setback, minimum 10 feet from the lot line. And if it's a corner lot, in a corner lot, it would be a minimum of three feet from that lot line. Also, it states that the following guidelines for residential units will apply in areas with front access and front driveways, parking as access in Oak Hills, unless otherwise stated, front setback 20 feet from the lot line, rear 10 feet from the lot line, and on a corner lot, it would be three feet from the lot line.
Mr. Chairman. A question for Mr. Price. The section that you just read, read as it relates to the residential units. Help me, are we making a distinction because the applicant pointed out that they were treating the townhouses as same, I mean, under the same classification as single family? Are we not, are, are we using the same setbacks for townhouses and for single family detached?
Sorry, it's me again. Sorry, I misspoke. The, the townhomes have a 20-foot setback, so they're in the residential section, sorry. Because they'll have front, they'll have a, I think it's one car garage and then a one car off-street parking space. So the 20-foot setbacks for townhomes.
Oh, I guess, so that's my question, the, the section that Mr. Price just read on your page seven, our page 41, is that setback solely for the townhouses? Or are we using the same setback for detached units?
I just think that, that would be, the second part would be for all residential units. So it would be for your both single family detached and for the townhomes unless they're using alleys. And then the first portion would apply. Yeah, commercial.
Three feet's aggressive.
20 feet?
I said three feet.
Yes, sir.
Is very aggressive.
Yeah, now I will say that, and again, this is something that the applicant can speak on. A lot of times, especially when you're talking about detached units, that, that will affect their, the type of rating, the fire rating they have to have on the building. They usually have to have a five foot, usually most developments will at least try to have five feet from the property line.
That's what I meant.
Rating, but if it's going to be closer, that will require additional building standards for the structures.
Also, for someone who's trying to make that turn, the, the line of sight of three feet versus five feet. But anyway, I'm not.
Yeah, and, and again, other things would apply, and I know exactly where you're going. So, you know, things such as visibility triangle, there are other parts of the code that would default to this type of development if it's not referenced to ensure that it doesn't impede visibility on those corners.
All right, staff, housekeeping question again. We, if we recommend approval, we're recommending this on page 33, 31. Ordinance, that reflects back to the Oak Hills Plan Development District, all that. So if we're concerned about setbacks, do we make our recommendation on them needing to be larger?
I'm one person.
Commissioner.
But I mean, my thought is that those, those setbacks are appropriate for a townhouse, but it just seems a little bit. I would expect more on the detached units, is what I'm trying to say.
Yes, sir.
Commission, other comments or motion? There? Yes, Commissioner Grady.
I would like to make a motion to advance case 24-008 MA to County Council with a recommendation of approval per staff recommendation.
Are we going to note B2 is scratched out, section 2B2? Would be updated by staff?
So, yes, so on page 22, under the proposed, unidentified as proposed Bane sites surrounding Oak Hills Golf Course, that will, the removal of 290 townhomes will be made. And also on page 31, it would be the same and was the removal of B2, which your office will reference as 290 townhomes. Both of those will be removed from the ordinance going to County Council.
Does Commissioner Grady need to restate his motion? Is that part of your motion, Commissioner Grady?
Yes, I, I would amend my motion to move that the scrivener's errors that have been identified in this discussion be corrected.
Given that, I'll second. I'm allowed to do that as chair, right? With a motion and a second, can we take a vote? Recommendation of approval with the staff's updates.
Those in favor of, we have a motion, excuse me, we have a motion for the approval of case 24-008 MA for the amended PDD. Those in favor of the motion, a yes vote is in favor of the, the motion for approval. Those in favor, Grady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Durant?
Aye.
Johnson? Yonke?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes.
Thank you, staff. After a healthy discussion, that is approval of recommendation going to County Council that will meet on the 21st of May, correct? If I remember that right?
That's correct.
And move on to our next case. That would be 5B4, case number 24-009 MA. Staff, whenever you're ready, back to you.
All right, next item is case 24-008 MA.
And we'll give it a minute for people to step out quietly, please. And I'll take the moment of privilege to say thank you, Commissioners, for a good discussion on this one. This is a lot of property we're looking at for the county. Yes. 1,500 now, possibly.
Okay, I had a joke, but I can't say it now. We're talking about after the meeting. All right, you ready? Mr. Chair.
Yes, ready when you are. The gavel? All right, we're just, oh yeah, sorry. Hey, guys, we want to keep it down so we can move on with the meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next item is case 24-009 MA. The applicant is Aaron Breeden. The location is along Hardscrabble Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone, no, this is right, 9.18 acres from HM, which is Homestead, zoning to GC, which is general commercial. Just correct this as I go forward. Staff recommends disapproval of this request. And if you note under the conclusion, under the second paragraph, it actually should read, the subject site does not meet the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. Also, apologize for that, and that goes along with the disapproval. So again, staff recommends disapproval as it would not be consistent with the objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan, which, which calls for non-residential development to be located along main road corridors and within a contextually appropriate distance from a primary arterial course. However, the requested map amendment would be compatible with the commercial development patterns of the adjacent parcels along Hardscrabble Road. In addition, the current zoning is inconsistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan designation for this area also. But again, principally, staff recommends disapproval of this based on the current language found within the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, staff. Commissioner Johnson, do you have anyone sign up to speak?
We have, under the applicant, we have Jake Simcoe.
Come on down, state your name and address.
It's Simco. As a typical engineer, my handwriting is terrible, so I apologize for that. Jake Simco, I'm 459 Thoroughbred Drive, Cleveland, Tennessee. So it's a long drive this morning, not much rain though, so we're good. Yes, I'm representing the applicant on this, and it seemed like Homestead was kind of a placeholder for the existing zoning. It's vacant, it's got a big hill in it. And looking at the surrounding properties, it's all, it's all commercial, basically, with the, you know, exception of the, the subdivision to the, to the south of us. But we're, we're seeking to zone to commercial that just gives us the most flexibility on, on the property to, to develop it. We're looking at some, you know, restaurants or something like that along the front edge. And then the back is still kind of up in the air to be determined. We're looking at a couple of different options there. But I would love the opportunity to answer any questions you guys have.
Thanks for making the drive, coming out.
Yeah.
Yeah, take it out.
Mr. Chairman, there's no one else signed up.
Anyone else in the audience that wanted to sign up for this one, just walked in later? Okay, this is on the floor for discussion and questions for staff, Commissioners? Questions in general? Yes, Commissioner Taylor?
Yes, I was moving. And can we pull the map up some? I just want to see, yeah, right there. So the GC below that neighborhood, yeah, I get, and, and, uh, are those qualified GCs? Do they, do they meet the requirements? Or is it hard to say?
No, I mean, they do. The GC doesn't have any specifics as it relates to lot size or anything. So that, those would fit, and those were actually recently rezoned to commercial also. And, and one thing else I'll point out, and it's kind of small. If you take a look at the parcel south of, zoom in a little bit more down. So if you take a look at the parcel south of that commercial area that we were just looking at, I think that you referenced, where you see the Murphy USA and the Walgreens, and you come down a little bit more time, and the O'Reilly's and going all the way down to the Sonic. Those are zone PDD, you know, PD. That was part of the Summit Plan Development. It was, they identified that area for commercial uses. So even though it has a planned development dish, planned development zoning designation, they are, it was identified for general commercial uses.
Mr. Price, the Publix, what is that zone?
So the Publix, I believe the Publix is also zone PDD. Yes. And, and to go back to something you mentioned earlier, you know, this, that, you know, a while ago, you could, and I'm going, when I say a while ago, I mean like five years ago, but you know, years ago, you could come in with a single-use plan development. And so I think as this area in the northeast part of the, of Richland County was developing, just to kind of allow certain uses to come in, but yet at the same time not open up the floodgates for all commercial uses, you will see a lot of the, these identified as planned development, including where the Publix Shopping Center is, across the street, where the Spinks Convenience Store is also. And I believe that the portions just south of where the Spinks was, a piece of that was also PDD that was rezoned to general commercial. So that's, that's how a lot of the PDDs came about in that particular area.
And, and the reason for my question was that I know a lot of times we're looking at these and we try, I don't know if it's a word, I'll make it up now though, but we try to avoid like that zoning creep where we start letting things in. But if, again, I guess the main reason for the question is the, the parcel that seems to sandwich this particular neighborhood. Yes, that one. If that one's good, that's why I was asking.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Johnson?
Prior to Mr. Taylor, Commissioner Taylor's comment, I mean, looking at the original zoning map, it looked like an outlier, but to your point, once you look at that corridor moving south, that it doesn't appear to be out of line with the exception of that one little portion where the residential comes all the way out. But the rest of that, it, it's not immediately apparent because those are done as PUD developments, as PD developments. So, I mean, it really walked in here very much in alignment with staff's recommendation. But seeing the point that you raise, that corridor is arguably a GC corridor. So, I mean, I. Changed my viewpoint on it.
Yes, Commissioner Johnson and Commissioners, I see the same thing. It's the nature of the character of this area. It's one of the factors we looked at, look at with our recommendations. Any other comments, Commissioners? Anyone interested in making a motion?
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Durant?
I move that we advance map amendment 24-009 to the County Council with a recommendation of approval based on staff's comments that the requested map amendment would be compatible with the commercial development pattern of adjacent parcels on Hardscrabble Road.
Second.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Durant, and we have a second from Commissioner Taylor. I'm just understanding the bottom part of the reasoning is based off the however statement that the map amendment would be compatible with the commercial development pattern of adjacent parcels. Okay, with a motion and a second, staff, could you please take a vote? Okay, with the motion and a second, staff, could you please take a vote?
Also, I mean, just going to add.
Yes.
I can't add to your amendment necessarily, but I did take a phrase you used, Mr. Chair, where you said that it fits the nature and character of the area also.
Yes.
If you don't mind, we'd also include that as part of the.
Commissioner Durant, are you okay including that in your motion?
Yes, I am.
All right. Commissioner Taylor, you still okay seconding that?
Second.
All right.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have a motion for the approval of case 24-009 MA. A yes vote would be in favor of that motion. Those in favor? Durant?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Thank you, staff. That's our recommendation of approval, and it'll be seen by county council May 21st. We can move along to 5B. Five? It's number 24-010. Right?
003. And 10. Yep.
Yep, 5B5 is where we're at. Westinger Road?
So 24-030. Okay. So on page 71 of your, in the agenda, that actually should be, instead of 24-003, it should actually be 24-010 MA. Okay.
Thank you, staff, I see that now.
Okay, thank you. So the next item, of course, is case 24-010 MA. The applicant Dawson Yandel, the location is along Westinger Road, and the applicant is requesting to rezone 13.48 acres from M1, which is Light Industrial, which is a legacy zoning designation from our previous code, to R2, which is Residential 2. Staff recommends disapproval of this, of this request. The requested map amendment would not be consistent with the objectives of the 2015 Comprehensive Plan for the neighborhood low-density, future land use designation. According to the plan, lower-density, single-family neighborhood developments, or the preferred development type. In addition, while the requested amendment will provide for uses that are similar to those in the adjacent area, the development standards of the requested R2, meaning lot size, lot width, and density are not compatible. For these reasons, staff recommends disapproval of this map amendment. Again, this is one where, you know, upon the adoption of the current Land Development Code, we went with the equivalency zoning designations. And so as we are preparing to update our comprehensive plan, we're still relying upon the 2015. And so within the neighborhood low-density designation, that actually supported the, you know, go back to our previous zoning designations, rural, rural residential, RSE, as the recommended zoning designations for property found within a neighborhood low-density, density, excuse me. The RSLD, which was, again, on our previous code, will support it in the neighborhood medium-density. And so again, going back to, as we adopted the equivalency, this R2 is in line with the RSLD. So that's one of the reasons why staff's recommendation was against this particular request.
Thank you, staff. Commissioners, are we following? Does it seem like it's, the density is lower than expected or higher?
Yes.
Per the request, is what you're saying?
Yeah, so the density for the R2, which is three units per acre, is higher than the adjacent zoning designations in this area, which they range from one unit per acre, basically 1.52 units per acre, and also three. I was giving that three units per acre, yeah, three acres per unit. I said acre, so it was 0.66, 0.33, and I'm sorry, and one. Yeah, versus the proposed request, which is three, which has a density of three.
Staff, is the county map updated? RT, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, all, again, just, you know, for those listening, all parcels of 35 acres or more became AG. Anything less than 35 but more than three became HM, and anything less than three be, well, became RT. That was previously zone rural.
Thank you, staff. Commissioner Johnson, do we have anyone sign up to speak?
We have two people signed up to speak. No one is listed in the applicant slot? Is the applicant present?
Come on down first. Your name and address.
Excuse me, and we will also need the applicant to also sign that before they leave today, if they have not signed up.
Yeah, I'm Paul. I had listed just below it as an agent of the applicant.
Okay.
All right, Paul, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
So my name is Paul Micho. I'm at 3101 Gaston Street. And, yeah, born and raised in the, in the county. When we were brought on by the, by the owner for this project, the objective was to develop something that the county and the community would be proud of, and it still is. So initially, looking at the surrounding zonings, we applied for a GC rezone. But based on the feedback that we received from the, from staff and the community, the, a low-density residential zoning was more fitting. So we withdrew our GC application, and when I resubmitted, I actually submitted for RSLD. But since the, the code change, we, we looked at the equivalency, and it looked to us like that would, would have been R2. And so based on that, you, we started the design. We're just looking at 25 street frontage lots. We're in coordination with DOT for any kind of street improvements that they would require, and DHEC for the septic and other approvals that they'll need. There's a 12-inch water main that's right out front. And so, yeah, basically, we're just asking the commissioners at this point to take just a somewhat less restrictive interpretation of how the, the code has changed. And to, to allow the, the R2 rezone, we, we're also working with Ms. Barron, Councilwoman Barron, on this. We have a town hall meeting on the 20th, and from what she's indicated so far, she, she likes this design. And, yeah, so we, we're hoping that we can keep the R2. I'm not sure if R1 would still be able to, to work with this. But, yeah, it's just 25 street front homes that we're asking for.
All right, perfect time. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Staff, could you confirm that? In the notes, it says they could have up to 40 dwelling units. Did you say that already? Page 71?
That's, that's correct.
Thank you.
At the density of three, of course, Thomas, they're 13.48, give you up to 40. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have one person signed up against Roberto C. Porti.
Go on down.
Do we have someone else that wants to speak? Okay, just a second, please.
My name is Roberto Porti, 1157 Westinger Road. I'm against it because when my wife and I bought this property, we stay in the subdivision now, and it's like back off the road, it's real quiet, hardly no traffic at all. If we bring in these 25 homes, which could possibly be up to 40 homes now that I hear now, that's a lot of traffic. That's a lot of traffic. It's not going to be as quiet as it is now. Also, our roads are very small off of Westinger. They're really not up to par. And actually, off of 321, that's a high-traffic area. So if these homes were to come, the roads itself would have to be redesigned because it's a four-lane highway. So if you're going to actually be coming off 321 off of Westinger side, you wouldn't only be entering into two-way traffic, you'll be entering into four-way traffic because it goes up and down. And that's a hazard right there, so that tells you that the roads would have to be redesigned also. And then also, you have to look at the schools. If you bring in 25 to 40 homes, is the schools on that part of town going to be able to handle, you know, kids that may be brought up in that, in those houses? Because in some areas, like in Kershaw County, they're not issuing any permits to build because the schools are just overpopulated now. So you just have to, it's more than just building houses and because the property is just vacant. And I appreciate y'all for listening.
Yes, for coming down.
Anyone else who wanted to speak on this item? If you would, give your name and address, please. And you have two minutes.
Hello, my name's Todd Corley, and I own the property at 7462 Fairfield Road and 1050 Westinger Road. It's a 150-acre heavy industrial site. We crush concrete at that location. We run an incinerator at that location. We do metal recycling at that location. And we also run our construction business and dumpster service at that location. We chose that location because of its zoning and the surrounding property, which included commercial property, industrial property. A residential development moving right across the street from us would have a negative impact on our business, as well as other businesses in that area. And during the time when we purchased that property, we understood that the county was, it was the county's intentions to keep that area, not, we're only heavy industrial, but an industrial setting in that area, which would potentially provide job opportunities to an area that's already in need of jobs and a high crime rate in the area already. So I am not in agreement with it.
Could you repeat your last name, please?
Corley, C-O-R-L-E-Y.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for coming. Okay, commissioners, this is on the floor for discussion. More questions? Oh, you'd like to speak? Yeah, come on down, sir. Again, speak, state your name and address.
My name is Jim Goodson. I stay at 127 Burdock. I live probably in the middle of both of these, the Oak Hill and the Westinger. And I'm kind of torn between both. We fought the landfill for probably 20 years, so it wasn't always commercial. And I would think that the building of home would be great, but there's no water, no sewer. There's some small homes, probably is not the right, you know, there are a lot of mobile homes out there, but if you, we're at walking distance of the Oak Hill area that y'all just discussed. So I'm kind of like, we didn't want the landfill, what they call the incinerator, but nobody wants to build any of it. So I would like y'all to really look at, you know, spread it out and say, I don't know if I'm far against it. I hate to say it that way. The, the building of homes would be nice, but if they're going to build real small homes, then, I don't know, like you said, that may induce more crime. That's all I really have to say. But I stay in between both of that, right on the back end of that.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments. I like to hear from the community.
Thank you, staff. If you put the cursor over the parcel that Mr. Corley was referring to, that's where, okay.
Here. Yes, Commissioner Grady.
A question for staff. So I'm trying to grapple with this a little bit because as, as you stated in your explanation, through the equivalency process, when the, the code was updated, that what is now designated as R2 was previously RSLD, correct?
That's correct.
And RSLD stood for residential, single-family, low-density, correct?
Correct.
So the question I have is, how is zoning that was previously called residential, single-family, low-density incompatible with a planning area that is labeled neighborhood low-density?
Again, just going by what was, was within the comprehensive plan, it gives a lot of guidelines for where development should take place and how development should also take place. But it also identifies certain zoning designations that are found to be compatible for that use. Sure. Yeah. I don't know, Tom has it, but don't worry about it. So again, those, those are some of the basis. We've always used that in making our recommendations for, for zoning requests that would take place within a neighborhood low-density designation as identified in the comprehensive plan.
Was it the case that when the plan was initially approved, when we had the previous set of zoning boundaries, that a, a zoning category called low-density was not appropriate in a low-density area? I'm seeing a nod.
Yes.
That seems very weird. So I, I would note that as a potential indicator that perhaps this, this is a more appropriate zoning type than, than the staff recommendation would suggest. The other thing that, that comes to mind is that on page 71, under zoning district summary, it says the R2 residential district provides lands for, primarily for low-to-moderate intensity residential development. So I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was clarified. And see if commissioners have thoughts.
Mr. Chairman.
And thank you, Commissioner Grady. Commissioner Johnson, yes?
Walk Mr. Grady's point a little bit further. Stepping away from the code, can you all clarify, can staff clarify? The properties along Westinger Road further to the north that are CT, right? No, correct, yeah, that and coming back this across the street? The, yes, those, those that are RT. Describe the primary use of those parcels along that corridor, right through there.
Residential. Well, residential, you have a couple of parcels that are undeveloped, but it looks like it's primarily residential.
Yeah, primarily residential, notwithstanding the zoning classification, but terms of actual.
Good discussion. Sure thing. Staff, can we pull the map back out again? There's no stupid questions, right? If we zoom out and we look up, is this the area we're just talking about? This golf course looking? Okay, so things are all, I like to give each property its individual attention. Yeah, now things connect. So we are looking across the street at the 1500?
Yes, sir.
Route? And this corner here right now is M1, and there is existing industrial. Parcel, is it that a speaker just identified? What's your address, sir?
It's heavy industrial.
Okay, yes. It's the one that's highlighted on the map, correct? Okay.
There's no heavy industrial in that area.
Thank you. What's the parcel next to it again, to the west? So.
You mean next to the heavy industrial?
No, that, you are correct, the one that you had highlighted before, that's right next to it, thank you. I'm just piecing the puzzle together, thank you. Commissioners, back to you. Yes, that's M one. Yes, the dark purple is heavy industrial, correct?
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of different zoning types going on in this area, I think we can all see that.
This is a little bit of a gray area, I'm sorry, Mr.
Yes, Commissioner Johnson, go ahead.
This is a little bit of a gray area question, but Mr. Corley, is the primary ingress and egress in and out of that site coming off of which road?
Yes, please come down to the podium, so we have you on the microphone, thank you.
It's coming in off of Fairfield Road, but it proceeds up Westinger, so all the trucks that enter our site go up Westinger Road, I mean, parallel to Westinger Road, so.
Yes, yes.
Basically, their houses are gonna be facing a heavy industrial site with trucks going up and down the driveway all day long.
There's currently no screening along Westinger, even though the trucks go back out Fairfield.
That's correct, there's just a fence there.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to offer an opportunity for the applicant, come back down for one more minute, if you, if you want to respond to any of the discussion. I try to be fair to both sides.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I did want to say that, um, we're, we're currently proposing, uh, the, the lot size, uh, would be around, almost, uh, a half-acre lots. So the, the homes would not be small. There, there's also enough space for around three acres of open space. And, um, yeah, the Westinger Road, um, Ms. Barron, she, she identifies this area as a place that it, it needs help. And I, I think that this, this design really works towards that. And so that's why I would ask the, the commissioners to, to recommend approval, if, if you see so fit.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Chair.
Yes, commi-, uh, staff.
All right, so.
Mr. Price.
Yes, um, only because it's starting to come up a little bit more. Um, and I think, you know, again, we've had some discussions on this. Now, just listening to what the applicant just stated, you know, what they're proposing to do, half-acre lots. Uh, but as a reminder, um, and this is more for the applicant on the decision they may want to make. But under the R two zoning designation, there is a maximum lot size of, um, eighteen thousand uh, square feet for a parcel in that designation, so eh, just a, a half-acre lot would not be allowed. You, that would have to actually fall to the R one zoning designation, and again, I'm suggesting to go, I just wanted to make sure I'll point that out uh, from a development standpoint. Um, the R two has a minimum and a maximum, although if an average, but none of those will equate to a half acre, to, to, um, half an acre.
Yes, Commissioner Johnson.
Mr. Price, I'm assuming that the proffer of the appropriate larger lot size, what the limits that you spelled out, that the driving issue there is, um, septic drain field?
For the larger lots?
Yes.
I think it, um, I think, I mean, that may be the case, um, for them. Um, I, I'm assuming that there is, um, water and sewer available. It's just a matter of along Fairfield, but it's a matter of just running it to the site. Um, but if not, um, the, um, if they have to go well, except they tend, that may require larger lots, um, than their district would allow.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson? Different question. Staff, could you pull up the street view? This is the lot that's not developed that we're talking about, right? And then across the street, I want to see the relation to the heavy industrial. Road. So as requested today, it could be up to forty houses, because we look at the zoning code. And then when the DOT does numbers or ours maybe coming up and down this just commissioners, comments, questions, motions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, staff?
So one, one of the things that we, you know, please take note, um, that in the staff report, um, page seventy-one, we talk about the forty dwelling units. It specifically states that based upon a growth density calculation, um, that does not take into consideration, um, any infrastructure that would be installed on the property. Also, it does not take in consideration of, um, any open space set aside that is required by code for major land development. Um, and because we no longer have the provision for open space, or some people would identify as cluster housing, um, the parcels would have to have, fall within that range and also achieve that average for the R two zoning designation, so, um, I think you can, you could say that there's a good percentage of, while we're showing forty is the gross, I think once you take all those other things into consideration, there's the likelihood of achieving, um, you know, you know, near that number is, is unlikely.
Thank you, staff, so the applicant states twenty-five, I was going based off of your numbers. That, so the picture I'm painting is possibly fifty cars coming and going off of that road and across the street from the heavy industrial. So does it seem like it fits for the area? Asking my commissioners. So or a motion? Or further discussion?
Chair, just one comment.
Commissioner Grant, go ahead.
We're looking at possible intent of putting.
And you could take a seat, sir, thank you.
Putting forty houses in here, did I hear that term correctly, twenty-five?
Staff recommends that it's probably gonna be less, and applicant states about twenty-five.
Twenty-five families are gonna be right across the highway from a heavy industrial site. Am I reading that right?
Picture I'm seeing. Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Grant. Commissioners, motion, if not, the chair will make one? Yes, go ahead. One more, comments are good, good, Commissioner, uh, Johnson, go ahead.
As my colleague spelled out, I mean, there's the, the, I guess today is a tough day of tough cases. I mean, because I agree that there's the industrial right across the street, which presents an issue, but, I mean, land use standpoint, we have a predominantly residential area just to the north, and then we just approved a fair amount, um, just across the street, so, I mean, work with and defer to my it's definitely a tough case. There's arguments for both sides, is what I'm saying.
Back to you, Commissioner Durant, thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that we forward MAP Amendment twenty-four oh one zero to County Council with, with a recommendation of disapproval in accordance with staff's conclusion that the MAP amendment will not be consistent with the objectives of the two thousand and fifteen comprehensive plan for neighborhood of the future land use design.
Thank you, Commissioner Durant, do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Taylor. Okay, we have a motion on the floor with a second, staff, please take a vote.
All right, so we have a motion for disapproval of case twenty-four dash zero one zero. Um, yes, vote is in support of disapproval of the request. Um, those in favor? Durant?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Grady?
Al?
Johnson? Yonki?
No.
That motion fails?
Failed anyways. I think I voted incorrectly, but I think it would have failed anyways. I was yes for disapproval.
Yes.
Moved as disapproval.
Actually, you.
Can we do the vote again, staff, I'm sorry, let's make sure we're clear for everyone.
Okay, so again, the motion was for disapproval.
Disapproval.
So if you vote yes, you're in support of the motion for disapproval.
Yes means disapproval.
All right, so those in favor of the, for the disapproval of case twenty-four dash zero one zero? Durant?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Grady?
Al.
Johnson? Yonki?
Aye.
That motion passes three to two.
My apologies for that confusion there. With a small quorum, we recommend this to following the staff for disapproval for County Council, where they will take up this case, May twenty-first. And I hear, uh, Councilwoman Barron is going to be having a, a meeting on the twentieth?
She will also have a town hall meeting to discuss the cases in her area, uh, which would include this case, um, also case twenty-four dash zero zero seven, which is on one oh five Weir Road, even though it's kind of on the other side. Um, it would not include the P D D because she's already had a town hall meeting regarding that. Uh, but that meeting would be six P M. And the twentieth at the, um, what's the time you go to that gym? On Crane Creek.
Where's the location?
Go, go back to the, go to the map. Go to the, um, industry right there. Yeah, click that. Sorry. Yeah, yeah, the Richland County Recreation, um, building off of Crane Creek Church Road.
Six P M, May twentieth, town hall. More participation from the public, great.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to our last case today. I'll speak slowly to give people time to have a good night, everyone, thanks for coming out. Uh, we're gonna be looking at five B six, which is case number two four dash zero one two. I hand it over to staff for explanation.
Case number twenty-four dash zero one two M A, applicant Jeff Rebel, location six oh five Blythewood Road. Uh, the existing zoning is H M Homestead, and the preserve, perro zoning is L I or light industrial. Staff is in a recommendation of disapproval for this MAP amendment. This request is not consistent with the objectives, objectives of the non-residential development within the neighborhood low-density future land use designation as industrial development with significantly community, community impacts, noise, exhaust, odor, heavy tra- traffic is discouraged. However, the industrial uses allowed under the L I district would be compatible with the current developing pattern of the general area.
Staff? Do we have anyone sign up to speak for this one?
We do not.
Anyone, we have applicant, right? Come on down? It's your name and address again, please?
Yeah, thank you, my name's Jeff Ruble, I'm the Director of Economic Development for Richland County. Um, this parcel is a six-acre parcel that the county has under contract. The purpose of the parcel is to relocate a Fairfield Electric Cooperative substation from the Scout Motors site over to a new site uh, to accommodate that growth. While this parcel is, is Homestead, as are the two neighboring parcels, a nine-acre parcel and a thirteen-acre parcel, um, they're the only parcels that are in unincorporated Richland County. The twenty, thirty-acre parcel to the left is Fairfield Electric Cooperative, which is, it's their headquarters, but it has a huge yard where they store transformers, trucks, et cetera. The remaining sixteen hundred acres surrounding this is all in the town of Blythewood, and that is owned by Richland County and is leased to Scout Motors, um, on a long-term lease. We have gone through a long, long process of rezoning this pro- this property with the town of Blythewood, so these are the last remnant properties from, you know, years ago when these were all, it was residential rural area along Blythewood Road. We have, so, uh, the, the landowner, Ms. Cooper, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Palmer, has relocated off the site, I think she's in assisted living. We're, we're planning, what we want to do is subdivide the site so that we would only rezone the, the rear away from Blythewood Road. The front, uh, her husband would remain in, at the house for another couple of years, and then we would close on that property. The two neighboring parcels are relatives, they support both the sale and the rezoning. Probably with the, with the outlook that long-term, this will all be uh, part of the Scout site. Certainly, open any questions?
Thank you, sir. Hey, commissioners? Questions, comments, uh, discussion for staff? This is open the floor. We'll have you take a seat for now. Commissioner Durant?
Yes, Mr. Chair, one question for staff. As I look at, uh, the map on page eighty eighty-eight, it shows the parcel in question and a couple of additional parcels, all designated, uh, H M, uh, surrounded by the town of Blythewood, which is in all white. What's happening in that, in those, uh, sections of Blythewood that surrounds this property?
Scout, basically. I mean, you can see that the portion of everything, um, south of, um, Blythewood Road and east of this site, um, that's scout, that's Scout Motors. Uh, the, yeah, the pieces across, uh, north of the, um, from the subject site, um, right now, they're in the town of Blythewood, I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure if we have any applications or if the town of Blythewood has received any applications for any MAP amendments, but, um, I do know that, um, the everything, um, east of this site and, and south of Blythewood Road is, uh, Scout Motors.
Did that answer your question? Yes. Commissioner Grant? Question for staff, Mr., did Mr. Ruble say that there was a residence next door? Or? I did just how you sit down, my apologies.
I believe you said that there's a residence on the parent track in which this piece will be coming from, so you can see there.
The map doesn't show it being subdivided, but, but it would be? Portion of.
Yes, that's a portion of, yes, sir.
Thank you. Just want to make sure we're not rezoning someone's home. Yeah, like the movie Up. Okay, thank you. Chair? Yes, Commissioner Taylor?
Also, um, is it Ruble, Mr. Ruble? Mr. Ruble stated that, um, others would be in favor of this, is that, do we have that in writing? I know sometimes we'll get, whether it's emails or, or formal written notification that they're okay with it, but I'm just I guess I'm leery to say that they're in favor of it if we don't have that documented anywhere, just out of curiosity.
No, sir.
I say any.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor? Any other thoughts? Discussion or motion?
Just, just a couple items to add in, this is not.
Mr. Ruble, go ahead.
This substation is not specifically for Scout, it serves the neighborhood to the north, so Cobblestone. The property to the right is a three-hundred-foot buff- The property to the right is a three hundred foot buffer off Blythewood Road, which we've agreed to maintain. Any power lines would go through the middle of that buffer. So right through the middle of the hundred feet, hundred fifty feet on either side, so that any power lines are shielded from any neighbors. We agree to either meet standards or exceed standards on all screening and buffers.
Thank you. Chair? Yes, Commissioner Grady?
I would like to make a motion that we forward two zero, excuse me, two four dash zero one two M A to county council with a recommendation for approval. And the rationale for that approval being that the character of the properties within the town of Blythewood is compatible with the proposed light industrial use.
Thank you, Commissioner Grady. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Taylor. This is for a recommendation of approval based off of the character matching the town of Blythewood zoning. Staff, would you please take a vote?
So we have a motion for approval, approval of case twenty-four dash zero one two M A. A yes vote is in support of the motion for approval. Those in favor? Grady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Durant?
Aye.
Johnson? Yonki?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Thank you, staff. It will be heard May twenty-first. I think you guys know by now at the county council. This gets us away from agenda item five. That was our last case. So we move on to number six, other items. Commissioners, are there any other items for discussion?
I did have one question.
Commissioner Taylor?
I had one question for staff. I was looking up something in the, the land development. The residential two district. It's on page three dash eighteen. And then the, the corresponding principal use table. I may not be understanding it correctly. I just wanted to see.
Yeah, if you can go ahead with your question and we'll see if we can pull that up.
It has, so on three dash eighteen, residential two district provides land primary for low to moderate intensity residential development, development allowed in this district. Residential dwellings and then manufactured homes. And then if, under the permitted use tables, but a principal use tables on four dash four.
I know exactly where you're going.
Okay, I didn't see.
Yes, sir. You know, and, and if you don't mind me jumping to Mr. Taylor, that.
But let me finish it for the commissioners too, just, just so we all on the same page. So four dash four, R two, at the very top, the classification. And if you go down to manufactured homes, there is no P there, I guess, for permissible, or there's no designation at all, it's blank. Should those match? Or am I reading it incorrectly?
You're reading it correctly. Now, the question is, should they match? That's something that we will have to take up. Again, from a staff standpoint, one of the things, we were just trying to at least let a, if we could, let a few months go by so we can kind of, you know, kind of go through the, the land development code, whether it be through staff, through our day-to-day, you know, interactions with the public or development, but also with the planning commission. So when meetings like this, when, you know, you come across these, so that, and we are keeping a log of all of, you know, these such instances so that we can bring these back to have this discussion with you. So, you know, to kind of go back, so it's not just a simple yes or no on this. This will be something, and I'll just use this as an example, again, thank you for bringing that up, is, do we need to amend essentially what is the purpose statement for the R two? Or do we amend the, the matrix, the use matrix for the R two to allow it? And so those are, those are some of the things that we will have discussions on, on kind of going forward. But again, it may be sometime, maybe September, because that kind of, you know, get us to a certain point where we'll start looking at text amendments for the code. Some will, we'll probably start with more cleanup items, you know, just things that, okay, clearly, we forgot to put in a zoning designation here or something. And then we would then start, go forward with really kind of making some amendments that for uses, you know, certain uses that weren't allowed. Maybe looking at why we don't have a ten thousand square foot acre lot or something along those lines, in which we will probably have to really have more, a little more discussion on.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Good, good find. Any other items for discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Price, I, and my commissioners, I did not speak with great specificity earlier in our previous case. And I just want to just make a general comment. What I was trying to articulate as it relates to fact that in most of the cases, achieving a higher density, we pushed ourselves to go into a higher residential code than what was previously in place to achieve some of those densities. And it gave me heartburn in that particular case because you have a higher density, which part of the concern was what does that translate into economically? When you have, when you were basically circumventing that from a policy standpoint in some communities that might historically have been considered marginalized or, or, or underserved. And so I just don't, I just want to be mindful when we start looking at strategic ways of working around the code that we just adopted. I mean, we spent a year and a half doing that, and then we come and we've got, in, you know, one community, densities that are in, I don't want to say juxtaposition, but that, I voted for it and, and I, you know, went along with it. But I'm just saying that I just, I just want to, policy-wise, just to kind of, just make sure that we're consistent from that standpoint. So I just, I didn't speak very clearly earlier, so I just wanted to just take that second, just to.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Any other items?
Yes, I think you'll notice that we do not at, on this particular agenda, have anything related to the Olympia mill overlay. And the reason behind that, as I stated before, we were at one time going to bring an ordinance essentially to you so you would see what that will look like within the land development code. But, you know, just kind of looking back at this, I thought it might be better that prior to bringing something for you to fully adopt, that we kind of give a, you know, kind of create a summary of everything that we've been talking about and looking at and prepare for a, a tour. And I think this was mentioned previously, of the planning commission, you know, just take you around to Olympia and identify some of the things that we've talked about with, within the overlay. You know, point them out, so make sure that everyone has a clearer picture and also can maybe kind of get an idea of what the, you know, true character of the Olympia area is and what it is they're trying to achieve before we actually bring something for you to vote on and then take that back to the people. At this point, we're still looking at which method of transportation and where we would get that from to let you know. But as soon as we will identify that, we will be sending out some correspondence to all of the planning commission members to try to secure certain dates, you know, to, you know, potentially do a tour. And, and, you know, if need be, we may just need to do, you know, just maybe two tours. You know, I'm sure everybody can't make the same time, but we want to make sure that we at least offer opportunity for all of, all of the planning commission members to go on a tour and see, you know, have an idea of what we're creating the overlay for and where.
Staff, sounds good? Any other items? Okay. Good participation. This rolls right into seven, chairman's report, where I usually, you know, thank you guys for your great participation. With the low quorum here, too. An extensive agenda. Appreciate everyone. Just for anyone out here still, like, as a commission, we spend time volunteering, traveling and reviewing cases and in addition to jobs and everything else and family. So thank, thank you, because we love our county. You know, we, we're trying to do the best that we can. Commissioners, I sent out a Google spreadsheet to try to track a little bit of our summer schedule, try to line some things up so that we could do this tour or workshops for the upcoming comp plan and eventually a planning commissioners retreat, which we usually have in August. So if you guys can fill in like your availability on this spreadsheet, that helps out. You know, block out the dates for your family, of course, and then make sure that we've got maybe a few that line up that I could pass on to staff. And staff, you're copied on that as well.
Yes.
So you can keep up on it. So thanks again. I'm not going to take any more time from you today. Back to Mr. Price for the plan director's report.
Other than the report of council from their last council meeting on the cases that you forwarded your recommendations on, that's on page ninety-three of the report.
Thank you.
Chair? A question on that report, Mr. Price. Should, should we read anything into bold red letters denying unanimously MAP amendment request that we put forward for approval?
No, sir. Don't, no, sir. The only reason why I just put that in red. Did I hear a German? No. No, the reason why I put that in red is just so you'll, it'll be clear what the action was. You know, sometimes you may look at that, somebody could look at that and say, and not necessarily for the planning commission, but anyone that can look at that and say, oh, that's just another agenda. But we wanted to highlight what the action was of council.
The comp plan, as the chair, I guess I'll speak, is an opportunity for us to align things with council and the, the future. I came aboard about five years ago and the first thing staff showed me was this great G I S analysis. I'm a G I S guy by trade, so I loved it. And it took votes the past of where county council voted one way and planning commission went another and where the comp plan laid in the middle of that. So we should see our county going in, I would hope, a unified direction. And we see some differences here in your, your report here, so. Yeah. About that.
Excuse me. Just, um, you know, as you're bringing that up, there are a number of things that, you know, you, as a council, I mean, as a planning commissioner, there's some things y'all would like to see, you know, such as what you just referenced. It, it doesn't have to necessarily always be, okay, we're in preparation of the conference, but let's bring that to you. There may just be some things you want to see, kind of what the trends have been over, you know, the year or two that we can easily bring and present to you at a meeting.
Well, let's get our schedules lined up so we can workshop. It's a great time to form the future of the county. If there's no other comments or concerns, the commissioners, I'm going to make a motion for adjournment. I got a second from Commissioner Johnson, and we will do a vote through hands.
Unanimous?
Unanimous. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, staff.